...city council debate conducted by the Greater Burlington Partnerships Government Relations Committee. Thank you for joining us tonight. This event is being broadcast live on KBUR. We will have media breaks sometime during this forum. My name is Jeff Burkhart. I'm the Regional President for Midwest One Bank. And on behalf of the Government Relations Committee, I will be your moderator for the evening. Our timekeeper this evening is Kyrie Duckett with the Greater Burlington Partnership. In the interest of time and fairness to the other candidates, I'm going to ask each candidate to observe Kyrie's signal and stop your response when the time is up. The forum will consist of rounds of questions, and response times will vary by question. The order of response will be rotated so that each candidate has the opportunity to be the first to answer at least one question. The candidates have not seen the questions in advance. The media representatives in the room will also have a chance to ask a round of questions. This evening, candidates have been placed on the stage in alphabetical order, and they are John Billups, Scott Deal, Bill L., Bob Fleming, Lynda Murray, and Matt Rinker. We're going to assume that the public knows who you are, so we will forego introductions and get right into it. The first question of the evening, you'll have 90 seconds, and we'll start with Mr. Billups.
First question, first of all, does Burlington have a crime problem? Yes or no? And secondly, what role does the city council have in ensuring residents feel safe and visitors aren't afraid of coming to our town?
Well, if you listen to the police chief, he will tell you that most crime is down, but however, there is a spike in violent crime. So, I think we have a problem that has existed for years. It's just on, it's a little different segment right now. Of course, the violent crime is the one that catches all the headlines. I think the thing we can do as city councilmen is support our police department. We have an outstanding department with good leaders, and we need to support them. We also need to try to inspire the citizens to step forward and get involved, to testify, to call in when they see something suspicious. The general overall climate, that we will not tolerate crime, that's what we need to encourage as city council people. And I think we do that by our leadership and by our words and deeds. What was the second part of the question?
What role does the city council have in ensuring residents feel safe and visitors aren't afraid to come to our town?
I guess, I guess I'm part, part of the way there. As far as visitors go, I, you know, I think overall, we still have a pretty good reputation for the Tourism Bureau. But we need to make sure that our streets are well-lit, places are picked up, and people feel safe when they, when they jump out on the street to walk down to another spot if it's downtown, or if they get in their car. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Deal, 90 seconds to you.
Same question?
Yes, sir.
Oh, boy. This has been my main concern since eight months ago. The crime, we have a huge spike in violent crime. Yes, the police chief has said crime is down in general, but the violent crime is outrageous. We have need, we need to stop it. We are being called Little Chicago, and that is awful, absolutely awful. This is Burlington, Iowa. It's a beautiful place, it's a great place, it's a wonderful place to raise your family, as I did myself. And we need to do more. And I am willing, and I will bend over backwards to help the police chief in every way possible to make this city safer. And to, hopefully, you mentioned tourism, that is something that we need to continue to build on. We have Snake Alley, we have, you know, Steamboat Days, we have different events here. And this is our opportunity to grasp, and we need to go with the police chief and say, "Okay, what do we do?" And it is the city council, the buck stops here. And I am willing to be one of them that will stand up strong, and will stand up for the people, the majority voice of the people, and to make sure that I follow the police chief.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. L., the question is, does Burlington have a crime problem? Yes or no? And secondly, what role does the city council have in ensuring residents feel safe and visitors aren't afraid of coming to our town?
Yeah, I think, well, I'm afraid I'll be a little redundant here, but I think, yeah, we have a crime problem. I have met with the police chief rather, and he's indicated that the crime is down. Well, that's the stats. And what I like to refer to, what gets our attention, is the in-your-face kind of crime, the really blatant crime that takes place now. And so, yeah, I think we have a real issue here to deal with, and I would agree with both the gentlemen that preceded me. The council, though, their, their job, I think, would be to not try to outguess what the police department needs to do to deal with the crime, but to be as supportive of that group as you possibly can, with training, with personnel, with whatever it takes. One of the things I think that the chief has said is the networking. I mean, it's, a lot of this happens elsewhere, so how are you dealing with it over there? You know, we need to reach out, find out, support them, and I think that's probably what we can do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fleming?
First of all, as a city council member, I'm not a police officer. I wasn't trained to be one, and I'm not trying to be one. I'm a great supporter of the, of our chief, the programs that he's put into place with his staff to try to minimize some of this terrible talk about crime and all. The problems, or the situations where he's put officers into the schools, which is a long-range problem, or program, but is something that helps to build confidence in the police department. So, as a councilman, anything I can do to support the chief and the police department, that's my job, and that I will do, and I'll do it very enthusiastically.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Murray? And anytime anyone would like the question repeated, please just ask.
Thank you. I believe that crime is down. If you talk to the police chief, he says it, it is down, and I believe those stats. However, I believe the perception is up. And you know that perception is reality, so if you are fearful in your neighborhoods and in your communities and in your town, you're going to kind of talk about that, and I have a feeling that we have a little problem with the little image problem in Burlington. I think council's role is to ensure the safety of each and every one of its citizens. I think that's an important role. And also need to be supportive of our policemen. We need to give them the training that we need, we need to give them the officers that they feel that they need. And also, we need to also be very conscientious that we're all working together. We're all in a team effort for this. And I did hear the chief speak on Monday at the work session, and he is very concerned. If you come to him with your needs, and you feel that your lighting is poor on your streets, he takes a serious look at that. So, really feel like the police are there, they're an advocate for you, and we need to be an advocate for them and be supportive of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rinker?
So, as far as crime goes, yes, I do believe that actually crime is down in our community, but the violent crime is what creates this perception that we do have a crime problem. And historically, I would agree, violent crime is up. And depending on who you ask in our community, crime is the number-one issue in our community. There are a lot of people that live in neighborhoods that have a higher crime rate, especially a higher violent crime rate, and for them, that's a very important thing. Their kids live in those homes, they play around those homes, they walk to school in those neighborhoods, and to have that violent crime is a detriment to those communities and those neighborhoods. As far as things we can do from a tourism perspective, a lot of it's about image, which has already been addressed here. But, over the next three to five years, I'd like to see us bring at least seven new police officers onto the force. In large part, that will help alleviate some of the stresses put on the current department, which will also help make our current force more efficient. I'd also like to see us bring another K-9 officer onto the department. That will help also make a more efficient anti-trafficking force in our law enforcement center. And ultimately, we have to make sure that we are providing the tools necessary to our police department in order for them to be successful. We can't create a standard of service that we expect and then not provide those tools and still demand that standard, so.
Thank you very much. For the second question, we'll start with you, Mr. Deal. The question, you'll have 60 seconds to respond, and the question is, please identify one reason why voters should cast a ballot for each of your opponents.
For each of my opponents?
Correct.
That's a silly question. I am running for the majority voice of the citizens of this town. And the only reason I'm running is because I love and care about this community, as good old boy said, John, a week ago.
The question is, name one thing about each of your opponents that you, why you would cast a ballot for them.
They need to cast a ballot for an outsider. Everyone up here, with the exception of myself, is an insider and has special interests attached to the community. I am the only outsider. I am speaking for the majority voice of the people.
Okay. Mr. L., please, the question is, one reason why voters should cast a ballot for each of your opponents.
Okay. I think, I think the group here is very knowledgeable as a group. I think that they're also quite sincere in their efforts here. I think that some are people person, and I know all of these people personally. And so, I don't really see how the voters can go wrong. They could vote for any three at this table. I don't know what else. I'm not going to tag individuals, I can't do that.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir. Mr. Fleming?
Yeah, I'm sure going to vote for a couple people here, and I'm not going to say who, but I think some people here are more qualified than others to serve the public interest. But, that's up to the voters. I just hope the voters come out and vote, and vote for whoever they please. And if you want to vote for Fleming, the deuce, that's okay with me.
Thank you.
I just thought I'd offer that as a voluntary.
Mrs. Murray?
So, we only have a minute for this question, because the talent pool up here is very, very deep. I would give Billups top marks for his intelligence. I would give Scott kudos, because he's in the trenches with the people. He truly is out there pounding the pavements, knocking on doors every night. Bill, lots of leadership training in his role with the fire department and stuff. I mean, he has been to seminar after seminar. You want to know how to be an effective leader? Listen to Bill. Bob, he's just genuine. He's just a genuine, nice guy.
Wow.
Yeah.
I want to thank you very much on behalf of--
And then Matt, kudos to Matt, because he is a VHS graduate, and my husband said he was a tremendous student when he had him in history class.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rinker?
I don't know how I'm going to compete with that, but I would just reiterate what Bill said. I think if you look at the candidates up here, it's difficult to go wrong. You've got a lot of experience, you've got a lot of knowledge, you've got a lot of networking, you've got a lot of business savvy, and I think it would be difficult to, to go wrong with any one of the candidates up here, including myself.
Thank you. And Mr. Billups?
Well, that is a, it's a good question, because I've thought a lot about it. People ask me who I'm going to vote for, and it's tough to, to figure out who I'm going to vote for, because it's, it's a toss-up in many cases. Mr. Deal screams passion. He loves the city of Burlington. He's very passionate about it, he's worked his tail off, you've got to admire that. I've served with Bill L. on Steamboat Days, and when I was panicking because of weather-related things, that man has a steady hand. There's a reason he was a fire chief, he's, he is steady in, in a crisis. Mr. Fleming, successful experience, you know, I couldn't believe he's only 86, because his experience should say he'd be 106. I mean, he's fantastic, he's been successful.
Really are old.
I've seen-- You're cutting into my time here.
I object on the rules that I'm being--
I won't hold my opponent's wisdom against me. Linda, no, that was a little, okay. Linda, I've sat next to Linda in some of these work sessions and meetings, and the lady is always scribbling notes down. I mean, she does her research, she's informed, so, and then Mr. Rinker, I mean, every time he opens his mouth, intelligent, articulate, passionate about what he feels, and so, you know, if you're, I'd love you to vote for me, but if you don't vote for me, you, you won't go wrong here. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Well done. All right, the next question, our third question, you'll have 90 seconds to respond, and we'll start with you, Mr. L. The question is, housing is an issue this council and prior councils have struggled with. How, how much do we need? Should we incentivize it? How should we incentivize it? New construction versus neighborhood revitalization? Please outline your ideal housing strategy for Greater Burlington.
Well, there's, first of all, I think what we used to talk about when I was here before was infill. I'd like to look at that to begin with, and how that'd be a bottom baseline criteria for, for replacement of houses. I've never been one to, I want growth, but I've never been one to want to grow the community beyond its borders so much. But what, what I would like to do is infill what we have here, I'd like to replace what we have here. I think the rental housing, of course, there's, there's housing here, and it's available right now. When the fertilizer plant was going on, there was some 3,000 people living in this town. That was, there wasn't available housing then. The housing that we talk about when you talk about a subdivision or whatever, has, has to really be, along with what you said, affordable housing. It's got to be housing that the people in this community can afford to buy. And with that, I guess, the, the council, I believe, has an abatement program and, and charge taxes, and I would like to continue that. I don't know, beyond that, that's about it, Jeff.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Fleming?
There's no question but that good, affordable housing in any community, and especially Burlington, is going to pay great dividends as far as attracting new people to our community and keeping people here. The tax abatement program is something I think is attractive, and hope we can continue that. And like Bill said, I think we can get into some of these areas where we need to refurbish, if you will, impoverished areas, clean them up, and put new affordable housing in there. That's the way to go. Any new housing, though, no matter who's doing it, I think is welcome in this community. That gets you into the TIF situation, and there again, I think that's something that should be used sparingly. We don't have a written policy as such, and we've had people ask us to come up with one, and maybe we will someday. But in the meantime, housing is critical of the success of our community.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
I would echo what Bill had to say. I really would like to guard against that inner decay in what I call a donut cities. So, if you picture a donut, you've got the inner part of inner decay, rundown businesses, crime-ridden neighborhoods, and if we continue to stretch outside that, that area, that puts a toll on our resources. Police, fire protection have to drive out into those areas. So, if we could fill in the donut, so to speak, and work on that, that inner revitalization, I think that's important. And I do want to keep our listeners informed that Iowa or Burlington does have an above-average rate of homeownership, so I think that's a positive, that we should promote more in this area. If you want to be a homeowner, move to Burlington, you've got a pretty good chance of being able to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rinker?
Jeff, could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Housing is an issue this council and prior councils have struggled with. How much do we need? Should we incentivize it? How should we? New construction versus neighborhood revitalization? Please outline your ideal housing strategy for Greater Burlington.
So, the amount of need with regard, first off, housing is the most important thing that our community has as a foundation in order to be able to survive, because the majority of the revenue that we get comes from property taxes. Well, those property taxes are dictated by the quality of housing stock and the amount of housing stock. The amount of new housing we need is going to be dictated by the market, and the market is the people that can afford to purchase homes and then the price points that they have. Some people in our community have the ability to purchase $700,000 homes, some people $400,000, some people $200,000, some people $100,000. The market, the market dictates how many of those houses exist. Developers don't move in and build houses and then just hope that people show up. They come in and they build houses that are, that there's demand for. I think recent housing studies, also if you talk to the realtors and developers in the area, they'll tell you there is demand for it. As far as incentivizing it, you only incentivize those types of development to the level of incentive that other communities are providing. And the reason for that is you must remain competitive in order to be able to continue to garner that investment. If you're not competitive, they're going to go to communities in the area where they can still get the same benefit, but they can, they can actually get more benefit because they're not paying as much, or their cost isn't near as high. And that's one of the reasons why I feel like Burlington is lacking with regard to its growth. If we want to be able to continue to hire police officers and pay for infrastructure as demand goes up, we're going to have to see the growth in the housing side.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Billups?
Well, you know, I happen to have a house listed right now, and, and when I talked to my realtor, she said there was almost 100 homes underneath 100, 105,000 that are listed to be sold. And one of the reasons those houses are listed to be sold, I'd like to feel, is that it's the American dream. You leapfrog into the next house, into the next house. There's been a lot of discussion about housing developments, and the houses are too high, yet they keep selling. So, that would indicate to me that people are succeeding in pursuing the American dream. So, we actually need more new housing. Affordable housing depends on the person. I do think that we can work with our tax abatement program to, to help with infill. I, I have been impressed with how the city, after a long time, there for a while, they were getting lots and not selling them, they're after it. They're selling lots every, every meeting that we're at. They're trying to sell lots and create infill, or tear down a structure and create a nice yard for the neighbor that bought it. So, I think we're, I think we're doing well on a couple of those fronts, but we do have a, a housing shortage. I think on the, the TIF deal, I would like to see us create a policy, I've said that before. I do think we can use TIF when it provides necessary infrastructure, or it solves a blighted area, and, or it rejuvenates a blighted area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Deal?
Yes, I'd like to reiterate on what Mrs. Murray said. We have a core area of this city, which is huge. It's a huge area that has low-income housing, and we're not getting the tax base and the tax revenue that we need because such a huge portion of this town, core portion of this town, has that low housing base. We do need more housing developments, but when we talk about affordable housing, I've been attending city council meetings for the last couple of years, and I've heard people talking about affordable housing anywhere starting from $250,000 to $400,000. I don't know who, and I'm one of them, I don't know who can afford that, other than doctors and lawyers and those types of professionals in this town that can afford that. We need to really, truly benefit the people of this community by giving them affordable housing. I was fortunate, my wife and I were fortunate, to purchase a home for $80,000, a three-bedroom, two, one-bath, a slab. But, at $80,000, there is no way I could afford a house at $250,000. And when I talk about that--
Time's up.
And I say tax abatements are wrong, and TIFs for those developments are wrong as well.
Mr. Deal, please, we've got to follow the time. Thank you. The fourth question of the evening, we will start with Mr. Fleming. The question is, with the benefit of hindsight, in other words, knowing what we know today, would you have voted for the Manor Project, what is now known as Burlington Crossing? Yes or no? And please explain why or why not.
I consider that a loaded question. That's difficult to say what I might have done back then. I think it's turning out to be a very positive for the community when I see what's developing out there, and there's more coming. So, from that standpoint, I think it's a win. On the other hand, I have mixed feelings when I look back on what the situation was, where we vacated that area, tore down those homes, and moved a lot of people. That was certainly a troublesome issue. So, I find it difficult to, on one hand, be critical of what we did back then, and then, on the other hand, be applauding the community for the development that's there now. But I am happy about the development there, and there's more coming. End of statement.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Murray?
Boy, I think my husband served on the council back then, and he was, somebody had a voodoo doll with a pin they were sticking in it. People were not happy about that decision at the time. And, you know, it's always easier to go back and do as Bill calls the Monday morning quarterbacking, and say, "Oh, you know, we should've, could've, would've." But we, they're just men and women like you, serving on the council at that time, people that have the, the future of Burlington, it's the best interest in their hands, and they make the decision at the time based on the information they have at that time, the resources they have at that time. So, looking forward to the bright future and what's happened to that area, I think it's, it's been a win-win for Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rinker?
I'll say that with regard to the Manor Project, I, first off, I wasn't happy with the process by which it was, it was all that took place. A minute domain for commercial development is not one of those things that I necessarily agree with. I am happy to see the project where it is today, and, and our community is finally going to start to reap the rewards of that project. However, I will also say that my biggest issue with the way that things occurred were the fact that the city didn't have all of its paperwork together. They didn't have their i's dotted and their t's crossed, which is why the developer was able to walk away from the table after the city already went through the process of removing people from their homes and taking property from landowners. And so, that's one of the things that I think fundamentally we need to try and improve upon as a council, moving forward, if those types of projects come forward, making sure that we do have those things in order. But if I had to vote on that project today, you know, it'd be very difficult to vote on that project doing the same process.
Thank you very much. Mr. Billups?
Well, since I'm a Bears fan, I do a lot of Monday morning quarterbacking. I would have to say, though, in all seriousness, I'd have to say, I would have voted no, because of the process. Do I believe in the project? Did I believe in, in redeveloping that area? Absolutely. I mean, who could argue with it? But the process of taking people's homes to put in a commercial development, that, that is, to me, is, is a real tough one to swallow. As a homeowner, as a citizen here, I, I don't think that I should say, "Well, my house is more important than yours." And I, so I, it, I'm glad it's worked out, I'm, I'm glad that it's, it's been successful so far. And I would echo what, what they've said earlier. We, we need to make sure in the future, when we do any project, we have all the communication set, everything, all the paperwork, everything sorted out before we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deal, 60 seconds.
Yeah, I'm going to echo one respect with Mr. Billups and one respect with Mr. Rinker. Both of them said two excellent things. Mr. Rinker said, "We need to get our i's dotted and our t's crossed," and this city, unfortunately, has not been doing that. And that's the city council's responsibility, because they only have one employee to look over, and that's the city manager. In the other respect, I would have voted no against this project, like Mr. Billups said himself. And I'm not pleased with the way things have gone. We, because that developer backed out, originally lost over $2 million. And now, according to Stephanie Stooker, our financial advisor, you know, she has told us now, because of interest, it's cost the taxpayers $6 million. That is uncalled for, and I'm not happy with minimum-wage jobs that we're getting in there now instead of livable wages.
Mr. L.
Jeff, give me the question again, will ya?
You bet. With the benefit of hindsight, in other words, knowing what we know today, would you have voted for the Manor Project, what is now known as Burlington Crossing? Please explain why or why not.
Okay. Yeah, it is a loaded question, Bob. Because I did vote for that project. I was here, I was sitting right here. And at the time, you know, I thought all the paperwork was there. I'm not certain I understand what these gentlemen are saying up here right now, that things weren't crossed and, you know, and dotted and all that. Because I think they were at the time. Couple of things that happened there was that earnest money was $2 million, and they gave us that with the idea they was going to do the project. As, as time went on, that, that gentleman that was going to do that project had to back out because he had illness, and, and they, right shortly after that, the economy, as everybody knows, really went sour big time. So, would I vote again for it? I didn't like what eventually happened with some of the folks out there when they had to move, but knowing what I knew at the time, if I was to know exactly that, I'd probably vote for it again. And, and the reason for that was the tax base was supposed to move from, like, $80,000 to $400,000. So, it would have been a growth process.
Thank you very much. The next question's going to be asked by Megan De Souza from KBUR. You'll have 60 seconds to answer the questions, and after this round of questions, we will take our, our media break, we'll take a five-minute break.
So, on Monday, City Manager Jim Fournau told the council that he expects revenues to fall short of budget predictions for the year. So, with that in mind, should the city still pursue adding more staff to the Burlington Police and the Burlington-- Police and the Burlington Fire Department as requested? If so, how can the city secure that funding?
Who's up?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Megan, for that triple-edged question. Yeah, see, we had a very positive meeting, a very upbeat meeting, and then Jim dropped the bomb and said, you know, "We might have some problems in the future with funding." I know that for a lot of the citizens, safety is their utmost important thing, and I don't want to take that away from anyone. So I think if we need boots on the ground, so to speak, in the terms of additional firemen and policemen, I'm all for that. And we'll have to make some tough decisions, as council's probably going to in the future, and how to pay for that. But I really feel that perception, really strong perception from the public, is that our city is not quite as safe as I'd like it to be, and crime is up everywhere, whether you look at Fargo, North Dakota, Des Moines, Iowa. It is up slightly, and I would not want to diminish that here in Burlington. Thank you.
So yes, I would agree somewhat with Linda in the fact that we do need to continue to move heavily towards maximizing the SAFER grants, which is the additional firefighters, and then also adding a couple of police officers this year. I'd like to see us add a couple every year, and the reason is, is we just added a bunch right now. We'd put a bunch of stress on the police department in order to get them trained. Also, we would put more stress on the budget in order to be able to make up that amount of ground in one year. I think if we put a plan in place, we'll have the ability to do that over a couple of year process, which is one of the reasons why I'd like to see us do it over three, four, or five years. As far as crime goes with regard to the police department, we can't just hire police officers and then expect everything to change. We have to do a multitude of things. So I think there's going to be a lot of things, and the goal there is, if we do those and we're successful and efficient at those, then eventually down the road, we don't need to keep doing those, so then those costs would go away.
Me? Okay. You know what? Budgets are great for expense, but they're always tough for revenue because it's like a crystal ball. I, you know, if our revenues are down, then we have to look at our policies and make sure we're doing everything we can to drive those revenues back up, but you're going to be doing it after the fact. I think budget-wise, we're going to have to take a hard look this year at budget and forecast appropriately. I would like to see us try to phase in a couple of police officers over the next year. We may or may not be able to do that. We may have to ask some departments to tighten their belts, do without. The SAFER grants are already happening. So what we have to do there is we have to plan ahead, we have to plan now to be able to afford those gentlemen in a few years when that grant ramps up. So that's where I'm at. You know, the revenue thing though is important. We have to support these different programs that bring revenue into our city. So we have to do as good a job forecasting that as expenses. Thanks.
I have since day one been in favor of more police and fire. And now we have the SAFER grant, and we're going to have, like Mr. Billups said, we're going to have to... And I think we need to set aside money. We can't just say, "Okay, well, someday we'll figure out what's going to happen down the road." We need to set aside money now and make sure that we have the money to pay for the fire and the police department. And we do need to phase in more police officers. It's essential to this city. And I'll reiterate what Mr. Rinker, Mr. Billups said. These are such important issues. But as far as the budget is concerned, and as Mr. Jim Fournau has said, yes, we need to tighten our belt. We have had bloated budgets, and the auditorium is one where we need to look at right now.
I'm in favor of adding police and fire. But having sat here before and dealt with that 11th hour and that crunch, where I heard Jim on the phone, or on the radio yesterday, talk about there was this, first figure he threw out was $60,000 maybe short, and then eventually it got like to $400,000. The SAFER grant really isn't going to hit us real big time for a few years. The police officers will hit us a little sooner than that, but I sure do want to replace those folks. One of the biggest things in the budget though is police and fire, the public safety budget. I don't know, when I was on the fire department, it was like 90% of my budget down there. So I don't know what you do, but you sit down at that 11th hour and try to forget how you saved that $60,000 and still do what you need to do.
Yeah, with the SAFER grant, we're obligated, and we've already done this, brought in the additional firefighters, and let's sustain that because we need it. We do have to plan though to the future. We can't wait for the third year to run out and then say, "Now what are we going to do?" This has to be put into our budget very shortly, if you will. And hiring police officers, I mean, who isn't for that? That's a great idea. Can we afford it? I don't know. One thing I found in my experience as a council member, you just can't forecast all of these things. You have to look at a budget, you have to look at the details in that budget. Our budget, you know, last year was 300 and some pages. I mean, there's a lot of detail in that, and we have to examine every part of that before we make some of these decisions. So it's easy for me to sit here tonight and say, "Oh, yeah, I think we should hire more police officers." Yeah, but you got to pay them. So I'm one that says, "Let's be prudent here. Let's take our time, let's study things carefully, let's listen to our city manager and our finance people, and hopefully make the right decisions."
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. We'll take the five-minute media break now.
Good. Great. I would tell you, these chairs are much more comfortable than those chairs.
No, I missed that. I was like, "What's up, my girl?" Well, I couldn't...
No, I missed it. I was like, "What's up, my girl?" Well, I couldn't...
Thanks for doing this, by the way. I know it's in the evening. It's already Charlie working, Texas.
It's part of the job.
It's...
You're going to be put to a lot more of the next four years.
Once more into the breach. Pardon? Once more into the breach. World War II. I don't know. I think seven. I think seven. Seven seems like a long time. It does. Just the first time. It's round robin this time. That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, it's always sitting in front of class, you know, BD sitting in front, "You guys..." You're midway back. But then teachers caught on to that and started assigning the people. Unfortunately, as a kid, my behavior always dictated me being in the front row.
Sounds like a couple of my...
Wish not. You know, things you know now. I had a good time. That's important.
Yeah, that's what my mom, she was stunned when she heard that she was...
My son? Yeah, he's social butterfly, class clown, all that crap.
I don't know about you guys, but I was an A-plus student off to school or college.
I was a veteran in college. I just didn't, I wasn't passionate. You have to find something really passionate about...
You do. In high school, you really do, because there's so many cliques and so many things going on in high school. Yeah, you're right.
You can't always get the class to...
No. But things have changed for the better, actually, in high school, though.
I could never get in the class as I want.
Yeah.
Because they never expected me to go to college on the first generation.
Really? Oh, that's horrible. That's horrible.
My mother was the first one to graduate from high school. She was not expecting to do that.
I think that's a favorite.
Maybe that's a fuck, no. That's great. And that's sad for you because that's because I didn't even made that kind of an impression. That's horrible.
See, I didn't, I never, really, I don't know what I would do if I changed. I don't know anything else.
I don't want to live there, three months out of the, in a motel.
Well, yeah, three to five months, yeah, after you own the house or the senate, both sides.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll resume.
Sorry.
Everybody get a nice break?
Sure.
Thank you.
Rest it up for the next 30 questions.
Thirty questions?
Mr. Joe?
We're going to be here till nine tonight?
Possibly. All right. Question number six. We'll start with you, Mr. Rinker. You have 60 seconds. It's a two-part question, but I'm going to ask the first part first.
60 seconds per part?
Nope. 60 seconds for the first, 30 seconds for the second.
I figured I'd see if I could snip that in there.
Fair enough. Good question. "In recent years, retail and dining options have expanded throughout the community. These additions help build quality of life. Some believe increasing tourism is a way to sustain a vibrant retail and commercial sector in the community. Do you agree, and where are opportunities to expand visitor traffic?"
So I would agree, and I think we're starting to see some opportunities develop. I know that out on southeastern community colleges campus, we're going to see an addition out there with regard to an indoor rec area. You're also going to see an indoor soccer complex go into the old Raider building. That's going to help drive some more tourism. I think as we continue to see positive development on the riverfront, that's going to drive people in from a tourism level. And then also, as long as we continue to see events like Steamboat Days and some of the other major events that take place, maximizing the opportunities at the Memorial Auditorium, those are some things that are going to really help drive in some of that tourism and hopefully see some of that growth. I've got 21 seconds left for your second part.
Second part, you can add 30 to that. For the follow-up, "How should the hotel motel tax be used as it relates to tourism?"
So I think the hotel motel tax should be used to increase or create those types of events or support those types of events or even the infrastructure necessary in order to have those events throughout our community. So for example, we look at the Memorial Auditorium, that would be a tourism-driving thing in our community. I'd like to see, I could see that money being used there. The development of sports complexes, the financial support on different events that take place that help drive that.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Billups?
I'm ready. Yes, I think that in tourism, let's face it, it's a driving, it's one of the major driving economic forces in our community. One of the great things about Burlington is we're a small little town with big city amenities. I think we should continue to work toward that, and I agree with what Matt said, that the upcoming complexes are coming, the success of the Recplex, those are all things that drive people. There are town, they spend money with our merchants and with our employees, and it always amazes me when they say, "Buy local." Well, buy local to me means buy here, doesn't mean only from small business. You buy from local employers. Second part of the question is the hotel motel tax, should it be, how should it be used? It should be used to support tourism, to keep that engine driving. I had a talk with Jason the other day, he said the Recplex revenue is down a little bit. Well, we need to focus on that and see if we can't, what can we do to help shore that up? And as city council, a lot of times that's going to be supporting the organizations that are driving that forward. So I do think we need to focus with hotel motel tax for that tourism industry. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Deal?
I'll take the second half of that question first. The motel hotel tax is designated for tourism and to help promote it. This town needs it. We had the Fireball Run, which was a success. It brought a lot of attention to this town. We need more things like that that are special and unique and say, "Okay, Ripley's, believe it or not, said, 'This is the most crookedest street in the United States.'" That's great, and we need more of that, and we need more tourism. Tourism is going to be the driving force in the future. It's the driving force of this country. If you look at it from a political standpoint, tourism is what is helping the rest of this country continue to grow and prosper. And we're a small town, and we're trying to do big amenities in a small town, and that's very difficult to do. But we are doing it, and we need to continue to try and provide those amenities to the people and to others throughout the United States that would love to come to Burlington, Iowa.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I've always been a strong supporter of convention and tourism, and probably because I've been involved in a lot of events here that I would like to draw people to. And the chamber's arm of convention tourism's always pretty much done that for us. So like I say, I've been real supportive. A councilman's job, and I've said this before, is kind of twofold. Infrastructure, which is real simple to understand, streets and roads and bridges and that sort of thing. The second one is quality of life. The quality of life thing's a little more complicated because there's issues like safety. Well, we know what that is. That's police, fire, and things like that. But there's all kinds of other quality of life issues, like the Recplex, the parks, the golf course, whatever, the list goes on and on. And I think you have to promote those, you have to have convention tourism to promote those. You take all those away, and I don't, you could be the safest community in town, but you're not going to keep the people here without that basic quality of life. And I think maybe as far as hotel motel tax goes, I would use that to further the efforts of the Convention and Tourism Bureau. And then I would probably split that up. We used to divide that up into several sections, but I would divide that up a little further and have it be dedicated to even furthering the quality of life things, if you can.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming?
Tourism is obviously an important function in any city, and I think we're doing a good job in this town. And when I go out to the Recplex and see the number of people out there on a Saturday, it's just remarkable. And it's very encouraging, I think. And now we're talking about an indoor facility, which is just going to add even more. The tax situation, we've always supported the chamber on that with the Convention and Tourism Bureau, and I think we should continue to do that. They know what they're doing, and the city should support them in every way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
First of all, I want to say that...
That's great, and we need more of that, and we need more tourism. Tourism is going to be the driving force in the future. It's the driving force of this country. If you look at it from a political standpoint, tourism is what is helping the rest of this country continue to grow and prosper. And we're a small town, and we're trying to do big amenities in a small town, and that's very difficult to do. But we are doing it, and we need to continue to try and provide those amenities to the people and to others throughout the United States that would love to come to Burlington, Iowa.
Thank you. Mr. L?
Yeah, I've always been a strong supporter of convention and tourism, and probably because I've been involved in a lot of events here that I would like to draw people to. And the Chamber's arm of convention tourism's always pretty much done that for us. So like I say, I've been real supportive. A councilman's job, and I've said this before, is kind of twofold. Infrastructure, which is real simple to understand, streets and roads and bridges and that sort of thing. The second one is quality of life. The quality of life thing's a little more complicated, because there's, there's issues like safety. Well, we know what that is, that's police fire and things like that. But there's all kinds of other quality of life issues, like the Recplex, the parks, the golf course, the whatever, the list goes on and on. And I, I think you have to promote those, you have to have convention tourism to promote those. You take all those away, and I don't, you could have, be the safest community in town, but you're not gonna keep the people here without that basic quality of life. So, and, and I think maybe as far as hotel motel tax goes, I would, I would use that to further the efforts of the Convention and Tourism Bureau. And then I would probably split that up, we used to divide that up into several sections, but I would divide that up a little further and have it be dedicated to even furthering the quality of life things, if you can.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming?
Tourism is obviously an important function in any city, and I think we're doing a good job in this town. And when I go out to the Recplex and see the number of people out there on a Saturday, it's just remarkable. And it's very encouraging, I think, and now we're talking about an indoor facility, which is just gonna add even more. The tax situation, we've always supported the Chamber on that with the Convention and Tourism Bureau, and I think we should continue to do that. They know what they're doing, and the city should support them in every way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
First of all, I want to say that I love tourists. Tourists spend three times more in your community than regular folks do. So we really wanna be marketing and targeting these tourists, so just threw that fast fact out there for you. Some ideas, I reiterate everything everybody says about the Recplex and civic music, Memorial Auditorium, all these things are wonderful opportunities to attract and bring people to our community, and I want to continue and support all those. But some other ideas I, I have that we could do more with reenactments. And by that, I mean, we've got great infrastructure here, great architecture here. We could fix some of these old buildings up, and people will come. There was a man by the name of Harold Tuttle in Little Sheldon, Iowa. He had a vision, if he moved one-room schoolhouses in to Little Sheldon, Iowa, that people would come. And you know what? Harold Tuttle was right. He's attracting them from Australia, he's attracting them from Norway, and people are coming from all over the world to see these schoolhouses. We have a ripe opportunity here. We've got Zion Schoolhouse, and I just wrote for a grant, just this week submitted it actually, to try and get a semi-load full of antique school supplies to put in that and develop that as a reenactment center. And I'm so passionate about that, I just get really excited. We could do something like a Victorian stroll, dress in period clothing. People will come to our downtown for things like that. Look at the support for Vintage Fest, lots of support for that. So there's so much that we could do, even entertain the possibility of a railroad museum. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Billups. It'll be, you know, two minutes.
Two minutes?
Two minutes.
This must be a tough one.
There is a lot to pay for in this town. Bridges, roads, sewer improvements, riverfront enhancements, emergency personnel, the list goes on and on. With infrastructure improvements alone, we are potentially looking at one hundred million dollars or more. Let's get beyond the soundbites. How are we, as a community, going to pay for all this?
I don't know. I mean, that's a question we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to sort out, to be honest with you. We've kicked the can down the road on Cascade Bridge for ten-plus years now, with no real plan on getting it replaced. So I think the city council is gonna have to really work together with the city department heads and, and work on budgets that'll allow us to replace some of those things. And, and we have to work on a long-term plan. You know, we may only be on the board for four years, but we need to work on a plan that's five, ten, twenty, thirty years. It's, TESCA plan was in the nineteen eighties. It's finally happening downtown now, so many years later. But it was a plan that they put in place, they followed the plan as a basic outline, and it's, it's happened, it's happening. The Tameville Building's gonna be redone, you know, the Hotel Burlington was saved, and all the, all the upper story development, that all increases our tax base, because it's a viable, usable building, it increases in value. So that's one way we're gonna be able to do it, is, and it's been said several times over the last two forms, is we gotta figure out a way to grow our town, not just grow the citizens during, that are sleeping in the beds at night, but grow the attractions to our town, so the dollars are spent here. The more dollars are spent here, theoretically, should be, we'd have more dollars to replace those items. The, the biggest thing, though, is long-term planning. We can't just keep putting a project off. We have to say, okay, this is when we wanna talk about it. This is, this is when we're gonna talk about this phase and the next phase and plan it. You might not live up to that plan, but it's gotta be in the background of your mind at all times, so you see progress. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Deal?
Would you please repeat the question?
Sure. There's a lot to pay for in this town. Bridges, roads, sewer improvements, riverfront enhancements, emergency personnel, the list goes on and on. With the infrastructure improvements alone, we are potentially looking at one hundred million dollars or more. Let's get beyond the soundbites. How are we, as a community, going to pay for all this?
That's an excellent question. And like Mr. Billups said himself, and others have said here tonight in different ways, until you actually sit on the city council, it is very, very difficult to find out where you're gonna find that money. I am one hundred percent against any tax increases for the next four to five years, any tax increases. We need to look at ways, like we just talked about tourism and other ways of continually building this community. Downtown Burlington, oh, thank God, it's finally working. And you know why? Because government finally got out of the way. Too much times, we put government, thinking government's gonna solve all our problems, and they don't. We need to get out of the way and allow the business people of this community to do their job and to do it well, and they do. They do it when we get out of the way. There's incentives, there's a lot of different ideas that are out there. I agree with Mr. Billups. We need long-range planning, and I've said that before, I've said it many, many months, that we need long-range planning. This city seems to be a patchwork of a quilt that just keeps doing one little thing here, one little thing there, one little thing here, and nothing comes together complete and whole as one. There's no real good planning involved. And I think that's one thing that should be directed to Mr. Frenault, is that we need better planning and better involvement in the community.
Thank you. Mr. L?
It's, it's a tough question, and I'm not sure that I have the answer either. I know that the sewer systems alone, the separation's gonna be another fifty million dollars. I have absolutely no idea where that kind of money can come from, to say nothing of the list that, that you gave, Jeff. But I, I guess if there's any kind of optimism in all of this, it's the fact that when, when I sat on this council before, we were not funding reserves. They are funding reserves now to the best of their ability. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, maybe Bob can correct me, but I think they're about ready to put another hundred and forty thousand dollars in this, this self-imposed fifteen percent in the. Yeah, yeah. For the reserves. So that's, that's, that's optimistic, although it makes it very slow. The process is extremely slow, and I think these gentlemen have said that. But you're not gonna rush out and do all that at the, at one time. It's gonna take you a little bit to get there. But, but they are moving in that direction now, and I think that probably is one of the things that's encouraging for me and interested in getting back on. So I, I think, you know, it's gonna take some time. You're not gonna do a lot overnight.
Yeah, this is not an overnight situation. So much of what we need to do is long-range planning, which has already been stated. I think with our strong city manager, they, he's got us going in the right direction, very methodically prioritizing all of these things. And I think we have to keep reminding ourselves as a council that our primary responsibility is public safety and public works. And some of that is not very glamorous. You talk about streets and sewers, but those are the core issues that we are responsible for. And I think if we keep paying attention to those details and come up with a CIP program that is long-range thinking, we'll handle this thing. I mean, I, I'm optimistic. Yes, it's a challenge, but that's what we're here for. And as we continue to see economic development continue to get better in this community, tax revenues can probably go up, not through a tax increase, but through revenues coming in. I think we can handle it. I, I'm still optimistic cautiously.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
Budget planning is a marathon-type process, so to speak. It's, it's not a sprint. It does take time, and it does take planning, and it does take strategizing. So we plan a lot, we pray a lot, and then we consult our crystal ball. No, I don't, I don't have the answers for the budget. But I, I am very confident and optimistic that we do have a great city manager in place. He knows his stuff, and he's got us on the right track, and I, and I don't see us getting derailed right away. So I think as far as how to pay for the things that we need, I echo what Bob said, infrastructure is critical. It's not pretty and fun to talk about, but we do need Cascade Bridge repaired, and that is in the works for the next, in the next seven years. So it will be done, I'm happy about that. So one of the traits I think I can bring to the council that, to help with the budget planning processes, and I am an out-of-the-box thinker, and I think sometimes tough solutions need out-of-the-box thinking, and I think that I can be instrumental in providing that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rinker?
Jeff, could I ask you to repeat the question?
Absolutely. There's a lot to pay for in this town. Bridges, roads, sewer improvements, riverfront enhancements, emergency personnel, the list goes on and on. With infrastructure improvements alone, we are potentially looking at one hundred million dollars or more. Beyond the soundbites, how are we, as a community, going to pay for all this?
So everybody up here has mentioned a multitude of things. You're right, it is, it is a long-term process, so it's not something we're gonna have the answer for immediately. I think we are headed in the right direction as far as creating a sound, stable foundation with reserves and things like that in order to be able to cover some of those costs. But one of the things that Bob forgot to mention, that the council was also, just as important in being in charge of, is creating economic policy that's gonna promote growth. And that growth is ultimately what's gonna lead to our ability to cover some of the larger infrastructure projects that we've got over the next fifty years. Today, if we are hit with major infrastructure costs, we really have but one option, raise a tax rate or bond it out. I don't like either one of those solutions. So that my goal is to create better economic policies, so that people like the Chamber and other developers can go out and market those policies in order to, to encourage that growth. And then we'll use that growth as the foundation to be able to cover those costs moving forward. That's all I've got.
Okay, great, thank you. I've got a follow-up question before Tanner comes up, and it's such a long question that I saved the follow-up for the last part. But we'll start with you, Mr. Deal. When would it be okay to raise property taxes? As a follow-up to the last question.
Oh, boy. I am not in favor of raising taxes unless this city was completely falling apart. And this city is strong, it really is. We have a good forecast, the city manager is excellent, probably one of the best we've ever had. He's not slimy like Bruce Slagle and Doug Warden. He's a good man. He brought us from the brink of bankruptcy. Good man.
All right, that's time. Thank you. Mr. L? When would it be okay to raise property taxes?
Well, I suppose.
Thirty, thirty seconds, I'm sorry.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Well, probably never by some judgments, but then, on the other hand, when you get down to the eleventh hour, like I said before, sometimes you, that's your answer. When I was here before, it was, we stayed at fifteen. They're at sixteen, three, three now, and things are still going up. Although for our community, we're just a little bit above where we are in our comparative other cities. So I'd hate to, but you might have to.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming?
Yeah, we have a responsibility to run the city. And if it requires more taxes, let's do it. I mean, it's the last thing you wanna do, you hope you can find ways to be more efficient in what you're doing. But if there's an emergency or a situation that demands more income through taxes, we have to do it. It's unpopular, but it's part of the job. That's how we get paid these big bucks. That was a joke.
Better be.
Better be, yeah.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Murray?
Taxes are never favorable for, for anyone. We don't like to hear the word. I just was on a trip to the American Dietetic Association, a suburb in Chicago, and they have exorbitant taxes there. And what they educated me on is that even though nobody likes taxes, they don't like the idea of taxes being raised, sometimes we have to step back and realize what our taxes do get for us. They give us a safer community, they give us better schools, they give us great infrastructure, they give us amenities, a high quality of life. So when you step back and look at those things, sometimes they don't seem quite the evil two-headed dragon that we think they are. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rinker?
I'm not in favor of raising taxes at any point in time. However, the only reason why I would consider doing it immediately or in the short term is if there was a major infrastructure project that had to be taken care of. I would prefer to see us look for other revenue sources, such as things like sales taxes. And this is assuming that we've cut as much out of the budget as we can possibly cut. The reason is, you disincentivize investment when you do that. If we were to raise taxes, I would want, I would have to see policy also in place that's gonna encourage growth in order to be able to offset those, so we can decrease them when the time comes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Billups?
Well, look, man, we, we left England because we were tired of paying taxes. So tell me someone in America is gonna be, oh, yay, more taxes. They're not. But as city council, I think the reality is that if we are painted in the corner, Bob's right, we have to run the city. And so there are times when we up here are gonna have to make a really unpopular decision. Now, I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure that doesn't happen, but it is reality that taxes happen. Thanks.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your candidness. The next question will be asked by Tanner Cole with the Hawkeye, and you'll have sixty seconds for your responses.
So there are a number of properties in this town that receive repeated nuisance notices from our city inspectors. Those same city inspectors will tell you that just enforcing the minimum requirements is never going to make those property owners invest more in their properties. What's the best way for the council to get people to take care of their belongings and their property and their land? What kind of policies can make that happen?
Mr. L?
Me? What kind of policies? Wow, that's a difficult, there's a, I don't know that the policies are really what we want to establish. We already have ordinances established to deal with nuisances. There's a, what we had for a short time was a lack of nuisance enforcement people. And I think if I understand correctly, now they're adding to that. So I don't know, I don't think policies are what we're after. I, I have a difficult time with nuisances that are around the city, cars in yards and things like that. I make about a dollar twenty-five a month picking up bottles off of my curb out there, you know, a month. So that's, that, that frustrates me, but I think there's ordinances in place that really need to deal with that, Tanner. And we need to support that nuisance enforcement group in order to be able to do that. I don't, I don't think policies are the answer.
Mr. Fleming?
First of all.
Sorry.
I'm as upset as anybody when I see some of the neighborhoods and some of the trash and so forth. I mean, nobody's approval of that. And I think to the city's credit, by the way, I look at the report every week on the number of citations issued on the nuisance thing. The problem is, we can't keep up with it. People in our planning department recently submitted to us an idea of a program they picked up in another city, and it's a neighborhood improvement program, where in fact, a neighborhood is invited to come together and with some funds available to maybe beautify the three or four homes in their block. We're just getting started looking into that, but I think that's the type of thing that we can do more of. In other words, to be more direct in approaching some of these people and saying, wouldn't you like to clean up the guy next door or down the corner, and maybe work together as a group? Don't rely, in other words, strictly on the city and nuisance enforcement to make some of these happen. I think it's a great idea, and I'm hoping we can pursue it.
Linda?
Well, Tanner, I am in favor of the Neighborhood Block Grant Program. And Charlie Nichols came and he spoke to the city council about this, and his thinking was, if you've got a neighbor that doesn't mow their lawn, doesn't keep the paint up on their house, just has rundown shrubs and never trim, and they're up to the roof line, you maybe feel like, well, my property values went down because I've got this guy living, living next to me. So the way this, this blank, block grant program works, I understand, is you get together in groups of four or five of your neighbors, and you fix up something exteriorly that people can see, the paint, the roof line, the curb appeal of your home, and then you are reimbursed back a certain percentage of that. And I know that we've done some of that in Burlington, or we're just getting started on that, and I'm very excited about that program, because I think when my neighbor cleans up their yard, it motivates me to wanna clean up mine. So I think it will work, and I'm excited about that Neighborhood Block Grant Program.
Matt?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, the ones that start down there, by the time they get here, I wanna make sure I answer it completely.
There's a number of properties in this town that receive repeated nuisance notices from city inspectors. Those same inspectors will tell you that just enforcing the minimum requirements of nuisance laws will not make those people invest more in their properties. What's the best way to get people to take care of their properties, and are there policies that can help facilitate that?
So I think the, first and foremost, we have to create a standard for what we expect property to look like in our community. Some of that has to do with just making sure that the opportunity is there for them to get rid of trash that's in the area, whether it's in their neighborhood, or it's at their home or property. Other things are making sure, we talked a little bit about the program that Charlie presented. I believe it was a community in New York where they created a grant program where homeowners, whether they're non-owner occupied or owner occupied, could get a thousand-dollar matching grant to improve the exterior of their home. And that really helps reverse the wheel of de-investment, where you're starting to see reinvestment in communities. And those are the types of things that are gonna help with the infill and creating better. better neighborhoods in some of the more rundown areas. That's about the only thing you can really do, other than just have a neighborhood that has a high standard of care as far as their home goes. Cut your grass, keep the trash clean, keep the bushes trimmed, keep the house painted. There's a lot of nonprofits in the area that help with those types of programs, so those are the things that are going to make that successful.
John?
Yeah, I would say that we need to enforce it. In fact, we might have to get a little stricter in our fines, because, to be honest, it costs nothing to go out and pick up trash out of your yard. It requires effort. And so, in that regard, those type of deals, mowing the yard, trimming the bushes, that's a different level of nuisance than like there's a hole in the roof. We have to demand that the homes our citizens are living in are safe, and sometimes we have to do that for our citizen, because maybe they don't realize, or they don't have the wherewithal. And so, that's where groups like the Paint-a-thon comes into place. You know, the Paint-a-thon has been a wonderful community activity where we're helping residents that maybe can't paint. But if it's a repeated offender, then you're going to have to get tough with them. And I think that's something that we're going to have to look at. Thanks.
Scott?
I think I can speak to this more personally than anyone else on this council. I live in Saunderson Heights, and my house is only four years old, and it's a three-bedroom, one-bath slab, just a little sliver of land. But I've invested over $3,000 over the last four years in improving the landscaping and the beauty of that house. If anyone came to 613 North Garfield, they would know the difference in that community than anyone else. And I think it is a combination of what Mr. Billups said, we need to come down on them a little bit more, we also need to provide block grants, incentives. It's a matter of pushing, and, you know, two different things, you know, incentives as well as punishments.
Thank you all. Thank you, Tanner. The ninth question, we'll give you 30 seconds to respond to this, and we'll start with you, Mr. Fleming. If elected, it will be important for you to maintain visibility in the community beyond these chambers. Which city committees and/or nonprofit boards, organizations, would you like to serve?
Well, I'm already on some, so I guess I would continue. I've been very involved with Great River Medical Center for many years, it's the largest employer in the city, and not as a city councilman, but as a citizen, I've been very involved in that and enjoy it very much. To me, though, I think the city council has to be careful. We appoint citizens who volunteer to serve on our planning commissions and so forth, and I think we have to be careful that city council members don't get too involved. Be supportive of, but let citizens come forward to serve on these committees. Otherwise, you know, I'm a councilman part of the time, but I'm also a citizen of the city of this town, and I happen to like it here, and I work on a lot of different committees, if you will, and I'm going to continue to do that.
All right, thank you very much. And if I did not say this, I apologize. It'd be 30 seconds for this response. You're fine. Mrs. Murray?
Appreciate that question, and I am not well-versed with all the different committees that they have. However, when I was told I was running for city council, I guess I was invited to attend the CAP Committee with Southeast Iowa Community Action, and I attended that. And I know in the past, the mayor has been on that committee, so that's a potential place for me, because I am interested in those that have low incomes and empathize with those that don't have enough food for, money for groceries, rather. I'm involved with Heta Gilbert now, I've been a past Kwanian. My husband was on the BEES Committee, and I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rinker?
That's 30 seconds, goes pretty quick. So, in the last five years, I've become extremely involved in our community. I'm currently on the board for the Burlington Rotary Club. I serve on the American Musical Festival Board. I helped start and operate the Shop of the Cop program here locally. I'm a member of the SEC Athletic Booster Foundation, and I've also been on the Burlington Education Foundation now for about a year, so I've already been extremely involved. I would continue with that as I move forward with the council.
Thank you very much. Mr. Billups?
Well, I've been involved in some of those committees over the years, and, you know, there has been city council people on them. I would say, though, in my opinion, I would be thrilled to join on any committee that wanted me, but I would say as a city council person, I would be a non-voting member, because it's pretty tough for the city council to be involved in some of these organizations, and then you have critical decisions coming up regarding their future, and it's tough to serve both masters. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Deal?
I was on the Riverfront Advisory Committee at one time, I was vice chairman, and I've been on other committees and boards, and I will continue wherever people want me to be. I am 100% in favor of the youth in this town and getting back a youth center like we used to have, J Street Youth Center. I'm also with the senior citizens, Steamboat Day, Senior Centers.
Thank you. Mr. L?
Well, I think the nature of the job as a council person is that there's 16 other organizations that those individual council people are going to serve on, so they divide those up usually, and each person gets a few. The one I enjoyed when I was there before was the BEES Board. Currently, I happen to be involved in a couple, two or three different things, but one that I, is pretty close to me, is I'm on the library board right now, and should I be elected, I'll have to give that up, because I would view that as a conflict. There's, I'm not really good at saying everything I've done, but I've been involved in volunteer work for quite a while.
Thank you very much. The last question before we get to closing statements, we'll start with Mrs. Murray. You have 30 seconds to respond. If you are not successful in your bid for city council, out of all the issues out there, which would you hope the council would tackle in your absence?
I'm very passionate about the infrastructure issue. Cascade Bridge has been a hangnail for quite some time, and I'd like to see that fixed. And I'm optimistic that the next council or two will get that accomplished. I'm also passionate about bike trails and good quality sidewalks. Was running with a Teen Beast member just Saturday, and tragically she fell, and we had to call a ride for her, and there's probably a sidewalk problem that maybe could have been remedied. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rinker?
If I'm not successful in my bid for the council, one of the most important issues for me is the issue of growth. I would like to see them tackle and create better economic policy in order to encourage growth. I think right now, one of the focuses that we need to have in the short and the long term is creating a sustainable but tax rate, something that where people can come in and invest and not expect to pay more. If we do well with growth, then we can ultimately see our property tax rates decrease or level off.
Thank you. Mr. Billups?
Well, I think the great failing is, if I'm not elected, the great failing typically is communication breakdowns. I'd like to see the city council work with staff and work back and forth, better communication between air departments, better communication with other organizations in the city. We have not done a very good job in the past, from time to time, communicating what we are trying to do or how we're trying to do it. I'd like to really see us focus on that, regardless of who's sitting here. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Deal?
I'll agree with that 100%. Communication's 100%. But beside that, I am passionate about crime, our violent crime rate. I know the police chief has told me that the crime rate is down, but that is not the violent spike that we've seen in being called Little Chicago. We need to get rid of that if we want to increase tourism and get more dollars into this town. And I also agree with Mr. Rinker, we need an economic force.
Thank you. Mr. L?
Ditto. I guess I would agree with probably everything everyone said. I mean, I think Linda mentioned infrastructure. Sure, police and fire, I'd like to see that continue. I'd like to see us maintain some levels of quality of life issues here. I don't want to really sell the auditorium. I don't really want to get out of the recplex. I don't want those things to go away. I don't want people to leave here. I like this town.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming?
Well, I hope I'm re-elected, but if I'm not, and that's a possibility, I'll enjoy being at home on Monday evenings. I'm looking forward to that. It'll be very pleasant. I think there are other things I can do, not on the city council. I've been involved in the past, and I'll continue to be involved in other committees and groups in the town to support what the city's trying to do. And any role I can play in that regard, I'm going to do it with enthusiasm.
Thank you very much. For the closing statements, you'll have 90 seconds, and we'll start with you, Mr. Rinker, and I would ask that you address what sets you apart from other candidates in your remarks, please.
Sure. So, first and foremost, I just want to say thank you for everybody that's been here tonight. This is the largest crowd we've had, I think, in the, this is the fourth forum, so thank you very much for coming. As far as what sets me apart, I think the passion and the ideas that I'm bringing to the table, my aggressive nature, the success that I've had, I've been a part of a number of committees and boards, and I guess from feedback that I've got from others and my own experiences, I feel like I've improved every single one of those committees and boards, and they are better today because I've helped with a lot of other people in making those successful. As far as what I look forward to here in the next couple of years, I'm excited to be able to serve on this council, and I think my experience with those groups and committees is going to really help kind of fundamentally change how we do business in the city of Burlington, and hopefully, I'm bringing solutions to the table. I have ideas now that we'll find out if they become solutions, but that's what I'm looking forward to. I do want to just say one thing, I may be the last person at this table to do that, but I'll be hosting a meet and greet tomorrow evening at 4:30 at the Burlington Public Library. If anybody would like to come and ask more personable or direct questions, I would look forward to have the opportunity to do that, and I'll be able to go into more depth and detail as to some of the issues and fixes for those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Billups?
Well, I, you know, it's been said before, and I mean it honestly, all 15 candidates this year, I think we would have been well-served with any of the 15, because there's definitely passion, there's definitely a willingness to step forward and serve, and it has been a long time that I can remember that many people were willing to run for a city council. The only thing that I, you know, I've said it, Tanner wrote it in the paper, I'm not the smartest guy in the room, I know that. I do try to listen well, I do try to build consensus, but I think my greatest trait is I get up every morning, 6 o'clock, sometimes later on Saturday, and I think about a better Burlington. I really have loved this town since we moved back here in 1976, and I'm willing to put forth whatever effort it takes. I will not be outworked if you choose me as your city council person. I will not be outworked, I will not be outmatched as far as my effort goes to make Burlington a better place. And that's the one reason I could point to, because we're all, these all folks are talented here. You're not going to make a wrong selection, so please, vote for any one of us, but get out and vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Deal?
Yeah, I want to, I love what John said just now. It's great. Everyone at this table and everyone that didn't make it to the top six were excellent candidates, every single one of them, and I'll say that, and I believe in it 100%. I still do believe among the top six, I am the outsider. And I think that's a good thing. I think city government and politics in general need outsiders, because they bring up points, viewpoints that others wouldn't think of, they hold them accountable, they hold them accessible, and they keep them at task. That's what I am. And along with John, I am self-employed as a tutor. I have the flexibility to give this job 100% of my time. I have that flexibility to do that, and I want to do it. I love this community, I've been saying that, and some people have, you know, you know, said that, you know, I'm a fool for saying that as much as I've said it, but I love this town, I want to help it. It's a thankless job, it really is. But I want to do it, because I want to help the people of Burlington grow.
Thank you. Mr. L?
Thank you. Let me first thank you guys for hosting this, Jeff. I appreciate that very much. I think budgets of the future are going to be even more difficult than they have been in the past, and the reason I say that probably is because when I was able to serve before, well, we had something like, well, and let's go back to about 1982, we had about 272 city employees. You've got about 200 right now, and so, that constitutes a lot of cuts. At the time, when I was on the council before, we had like three pages of cuts and reductions that had taken place in the city. So, contrary to what some of us up here might think, and I just had the opportunity to go through the budget, and it is long, as Bob pointed out, but it's, I don't see a lot of bloat in that budget. So, it's even going to be more difficult, because it is like that, than we may have thought. So, there's going to be some tough decisions to be made in the future, and probably what I have to offer, I guess, maybe some don't, Bob does, I think, but just a simple experience of having been there and done that, and doing it quite well. So, with that, I'll just let it go at that, but please do vote. We had 1,700 votes, I think, in the primary. I'd sure like to see a whole lot more now.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming?
Being on the city council's been a great experience for me. I've enjoyed it very much, and that's why I'm running for reelection. With our city manager in place, we've got a good one, as you all know, I'm very involved in, with the rest of the council and trying to make things better in our community. And very frankly, I don't want to quit doing that. Now, if I'm not re-elected, don't get me wrong, I can still be active in the community, and I will be. But I'm a fourth-generation Burlingtonian, and I happen to like this town. I raised five kids in this town, and I just want to keep serving, and I hope people will elect me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
Thank you, Jeff, Kyrie, and all the members of the television audience, and those of you that took the time to come out here tonight. I appreciate it. Elections have consequences, as Bill and some of the others spoke out. Elections have consequences. We had an opportunity for over 17,000 people that were registered to vote in the primary, and only 1,653 did. So, that tells me, and that makes me optimistic, that there's a lot of people out there that can vote for us in the general election, and I hope that irregardless of who you vote for, that you do take that time. It is your civic duty to vote, and it is important. Like I said, elections do have consequences. And just kind of a fast fact, do you know the definition of happiness? Definition of happiness is realization of a worthy goal. Voting is a worthy goal, so vote and be happier. So, there's my, there's my pitch. Qualifications for a city council, I think you have to have a thick skin and a short memory. Someone mentioned that this morning. I think I have compassion. I am a self-learner. I love to voraciously read everything I can get my hands on. I'm a hard worker, a listener, a futuristic thinker, fiscally conservative. As Chip in KCPS said, someone has to be the adult in the room. I've been very fiscally sensible over my lifetime. I think I can take on that role. Sometimes amenities are great for a community, but the greatest amenity can be extra money in your wallet, so thank you.
I'll vote for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Rinker? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm glad I made a last-minute impression.
You don't want to give a closing statement? Final, final? All right. Well, I had written down that I wanted to thank each of you for your time, energy, passion, and enthusiasm, and maybe I should add compassion to that. We appreciate it. I want to thank you for your interest in serving the community. We all know that public service can be a thankless job, and we definitely need dedicated individuals to serve. I want to thank the Greater Burlington Partnership and its Government Relations Committee for hosting this event, and thank those listening in the audience here and those who have been watching and listening on television. I'd also like to thank my partner, Kyrie Duckett, and Jason Hutchison for attending, and strongly encourage everyone to vote on Tuesday, November 7. Thank you all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.